Ladies and gentlemen, I have 6 o'clock, so I'll call the August the 6th Town of Franklin Council Meeting to order. The Board of Business will be in the page of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Barbara Craig.
Please join me in the bed. A flagrant allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
The first, the next item is the approval of the July the 2nd Town Council Minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read over?
Mr. Mayor, before you take any other actions, we do need a formal vote to just excuse, uh, just call that.
Okay, we can do that.
I move that we excuse David Colton.
All in favor. He's excused. Okay. Let me have a note. I'm sorry. The next item is the approval of the July the 2nd Town Council Minutes. If everybody's read those, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve.
Okay. All in favor. All right. The adoption of the August the 6th Town Board Agenda. I have two things to be added on there, and some other council members may have something else. But Ms. Mashburn has requested to have an item to add, and we'll put it J if approved. It's about the senior citizen expo contribution request. Also, Mr. Jimbo Ledford has submitted a street closing request. We'll put that as K as an agenda item. Does anybody else have any changes to the agenda yet, anybody like to make a request? All right. If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as a million.
So, second.
All in favor. Okay. So, Ms. Mashburn, you'll be J.
Yes.
And Mr. Ledford, you will be K on the list. We have one person signed up for the public session tonight. Ms. Duncan, Karen Duncan, I think you want to talk to, possibly having a resolution for the next Town Board meeting.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you with us tonight.
Yeah, my name's Karen Duncan. I'm here to introduce the following resolution for consideration. This resolution asks the General Assembly and the Governor to consider legislation that would prohibit those deemed an extreme threat to themselves or others from being able to purchase guns, and that guns purchased be appropriately protected. This is commonly referred to as red flags, you may have heard of that, or extreme risk protection order law. These measures may help make our communities safer. Red flag laws are a fairly simple process. Depending on the state, family members or law enforcement can go to court and seek an order that would allow police to remove guns from an individual's home and restrict their ability to purchase firearms. The person seeking the order must first fill out a form providing evidence of danger to others or self. Then the court holds an expedited hearing. If the judge agrees that the individual is a threat, his or her guns will be removed for a temporary period and can last from a few weeks to a year. Since the Parkland shooting, at least two dozen states have considered enacting similar laws in their states. In Vermont, a red flag law has already passed in both the Senate and the House. Just to give an example, recently in Glen County, Georgia, at least, excuse me, a former law enforcement officer shot and killed his ex-wife, her boyfriend, and himself. The backstory is this: In 2010, this officer was one of two policemen who stopped a car, blocked it, and shot several times into its windshield, killing the driver. The driver, though possibly under the influence of drugs, was unarmed. Both officers kept their badges and were not punished. One of the officers, presumably distraught over this incident, was later involved in two violent episodes. One involving domestic violence against his then-wife, and the other involving a nine-hour standoff with a SWAT team where the officer threatened to kill himself. Following the officer's murder of two people and his own suicide, his ex-mother-in-law reportedly said that her family had been afraid that something like that would happen. So, this is a perfect example of a good reason to pass red flag laws.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, if you would give a copy of the resolution to the clerk, or you may give it to me, and I'll see if he gets it. And we'll put it in the agenda, pack it for the next month's council meeting. And we want to give everybody a chance to read over it before we either adopt it or don't adopt it.
Okay.
Whichever way we go.
All right. Thank you so much.
And thank you so much for taking the time to turn.
Sure.
Thank you, lady. All right, no one else has signed up for the public session, so we'll move right into the new business. We need to set a public hearing for the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment. Land use administrator, Mr. Sessor, you're up, sir.
That's just some of the forward items in last month that got left out. Just like to add as for this item. At our June, or July meeting, it was requested that we forward this text movement back to the planning board to look at a little further, to have some options, and so we're not locked into a set footage on sidewalks. Did that, the planning board discussed it at their July meeting, and they have been, since amended their original text where it was simply just changing of four foot to five foot, and have added an area within a variance, kind of like a variance, but still requiring passing zones every so long, because that's an allowed adjustment through the ADA law. And I've got, I asked our chairman, Tom Harris, to come down if you want any questions from him as well. But I think this is the closest that we can do to stay in the law, and to comply with ADA, but then not be locked in, you know. Has to be a circumstance to get less than five feet, but I think this is the best way of doing it, was add that section. It should be in red in your text. I think it's.
It's not really.
It's not. It's the last couple of sentences in the, in the packet that's in your main packet, not the one that I just handed out. That was just some added stuff from the last meeting that I left out.
So, Mr. Harris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, we just basically reviewed the Title II rules and the Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guideline for also reviewed. And this was an option to put in that we could have a variance of times for geographic or right-of-way problems, that we could reduce it to four feet, as long as there's a passing lane, basically, or a passing zone every 200 feet. And so, we put it into the text so that could be utilized around town as needed on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Sessor, you have anything else, sir?
Uh, no.
I didn't have anything for me. I need to set a public hearing for the matter.
Joe, have a question.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, if it's appropriate at this time. So, if we go to a section of dilapidated sidewalks and want to tear them out and rebuild, we can't stay on the same footprint? If they're four feet rather than five, or?
We'd have to have a reason not to go with the five foot. It'd have to be, um, there's a structure, we have to move a structure, or there's a bank, or all, or something. It has to be a significant circumstance to make it not ADA.
The ADA has alterations or retrofitting sidewalks that we can't get away just because we're retrofitting to go back to, we can't grandfather in sizes. So, if we do upgrade the sidewalk, we have to go with the ADA guidelines.
You're sort of locked into it in what I'm hearing.
Yeah, pretty much.
Mr. Mayor, the one other thing, I do have a couple of points that I want to try to clarify with some of the language. If the council doesn't just let it move ahead to a hearing, you're not locked into an adoption of it still. But there's a couple of points on the language here that I think are worth a little refining. And also want to look at, a question of whether a full-on variance is actually going to be necessary, or if, do we have other sections of the UDO that allow the land use administrator to relax a requirement where it's appropriate? So, we might be able to, you know, to add that in as a resort short of full variance to.
Yeah. So, you will have that?
I'll have it some.
In place before the meeting. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, then we'll set a public hearing for Tuesday, September the 4th, 2018, 6:05 p.m., and that's a Tuesday because it's Labor Day.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I make a motion that we set the public hearing for that day.
All in favor. All right, okay. All right, we got you covered there. Thank you very much. Dr. Harris, thank you so much for coming, sir. Appreciate it. Y'all got a tough job. All right, we have a couple of budget amendments. Ms. Doster, do you want to present this line for us?
Yes, there's two budget amendments this month. Both are donations that we received at the end of the fiscal year that were not yet expended. The first one was a donation to Fire Department in the amount of $1,000 to be appropriated into supplies. And the second one is a donation to the Police Department in the amount of $1,000 to be appropriated into non-capital equipment.
Any discussion from the Board, the Council? All right. If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
So, ma'am.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor. Okay, Ms. Doster. The Tourism Development Authority Chair of Formula, Madam Manager, I think you'll have this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is a recommendation from the Tourism Development Authority to appoint Connie Bruberman as the chair for the TDA, for the time period being a three-year appointment beginning August the 6th of 2018 through August the 6th of 2021.
Okay, any discussion from the Board?
She's on the Board now, she's been here some time.
Any further comments, discussion?
I move that we appoint her.
Second?
Second.
All in favor. The Tourism Development Authority again, we have another point, Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is another recommendation from the Tourism Development Authority to appoint Candy Presley to serve as a member of the TDA, since she's directly involved with the collection of room occupancy tax, which includes Cat Creek and Snow Hill Bed and Breakfast. And it would be a four-year appointment as well, beginning August the 6th, 2018, through August the 6th, 2021.
Okay, any comments, questions, discussion from the Board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Presley to the TDA for a three-year term.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor. Carrie's. All right, the discussion on the Town of Franklin Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Sessor, sir, you're back up. And Town Manager, and also Mr. Hennig.
Um, yeah, that's your seats. Prior to meeting, we sent out some proposals that we, we sent on our feedback and back in the budgeting, before the budgeting process, and requested companies to submit. And left that open, I think it was about 60 days, and got four proposals which you have in front of you, and just decided that wanted, went through the budget process, I know we're excited, didn't want to wait till after the new budget was adopted to discuss this again. So, before you have the, those four proposals, and a memo from me to the Board, a summary of what the cost of each one was. You can see the totals.
And, Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, you step in really quick. What you have is in your packet, it's just kind of a breakdown of all the proposals we've received. We've also, from administration, been looking in-house. I know that we've reached out to Sarah Thompson with Region A to see if they could provide some guidance as far as doing a comprehensive plan, maybe some funding available. We've also reached out to some other counterparts to see some other managers that I know that could maybe provide us some insight on what their comprehensive plan looks like as well. Candy?
Summer's worked with, trying to find some other experience of other managers, other towns through this process has been useful. And I think we'll have an opportunity to share with you some of what you found and how it might guide a decision on one of these potential letters. And also, hopefully, we can also get some assistance from Region A. It is in their, I believe it's in their wheelhouse to help out with this sort of a planning effort. It's something that some of our, you know, tax revenues go toward anyway, so you might as well get more use out of the benefit of that, the council governments. From a legal standpoint, as I've told you, I think, several times now, a comprehensive land use plan has always been implied that you had to have one. It is becoming more and more concrete that you really have to have a set-in-stone land use plan that you're going to base your future zoning decisions on. While, again, legally sufficient, what we have between the principles of growth and the UDO, it's not, it's not nearly as far-reaching as it could be. And I think that not only from a legal perspective, but from just a planning and growth kind of perspective, it's an important investment to make in driving future growth in the town and how the town envisions itself growing. So, I don't think we're asking for any kind of a decision tonight. This is just an update about where we are, trying to find the best value to get that job done. But just, this is what we have so far as we begin to consider what it will ultimately look like.
Do we have anything tonight that we need to vote on?
No, sir. Tonight was just kind of, I know this is something we've kicked around for a few months now, is to kind of let you know the diligence that the planner's done on his end, and kind of where we are, the legal end and administration end. We hope by maybe next month, with the resources we've reached out to, we can bring back to council a little bit more updated version. But this will also give you, the Board members, some time to go home and look through this material, and kind of see when we talk about comprehensive plan, what it would entail. But this is just for discussion purposes.
Yeah, I take this as a question.
I'm just curious, I mean, almost the spread here is like 54,000, then almost 100,000. I just, it kind of blows me away. I mean, is that normal?
It's a Cadillac of land use plans.
Is it Cadillac? Well, I don't know. What a Cadillac it is. If there's.
I think something that might, we might be able to help with council members to see what this looks like, is maybe find, I know that these prospectuses that they've sent us have some examples of their work. A part of what Summer has done is to try to find folks in our area who might have experience with working with some of these, and they do, that will help inform your decision. And I think we also probably could at least find, you know, municipalities that they have done work for, and help you look at a completed land use plan from one of these and see what you, you know, what to kind of expect of getting out of it.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? So, we don't need a motion on either?
No.
Okay. All right. The discussion on the Town of Franklin Banner Design. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you, I apologize in your packet that it wasn't in color, but you do have this in color. Just something, wanted to get some feedback from the Board and see if the Board may be interested in allowing an internal committee to be formed with Board members to see about our banner project. As many of you are aware, there's several banners throughout town. You have the smaller ones in our downtown area, our Outliners, which are kind of your medium size. You have some rather large banners on 441 South. We've been working with Tony Angel Media to kind of come up with some proposals and ideas, and some food for thought. And I hope that this is what this proposal does for you tonight. We're not, by no means suggesting these are the designs you go with, but just kind of give you some dimensions on what we're looking at. So, just kind of wanted to get some guidance from the Board tonight, if there would be a consensus maybe to look at forming some type of committee to get this project up and going. We have spread this out into two phases. Phase one was in last year's budget, which has been carried over, and then we've also budgeted funds for this year's budget. So, funding is available, it's just a matter of what the Council would like to see these banners designed as.
Discussion?
Some of these are very pretty.
They really are.
I like the cardinal teacress.
As far as an internal committee, would you vote one Town Council member? Are you going to like to have more than one?
You can, and I've never said you can't. You can have any, you can even have a committee of the whole, where the whole council is a committee. And then it has to report back to itself whatever it thinks. But the point is, if you do, if you have an assigned committee of two or more members, then it has to act like a public body, announce its meetings, you know, keep minutes, all of that fun stuff.
So, basically, this committee would be choosing one of these designs to come back to the Board for Christmas, so you're.
And that's fine, even if they have those meetings, that's fine. We have those meetings, and sometimes they're done, and sometimes they're not.
Does anybody want to volunteer to serve for the Council? All right, I figured it's what you.
I would.
Okay, we have two, two that have signed up here, so.
I already am looking at them.
You'll get a public notice out. All right, any further questions from anybody? All right. Okay, discussion on the Town of Franklin Personnel Policy Regarding Vacation Carryover? Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr.
Mr. Talent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. I guess I'll start off the discussion, and Mr. Talent can chime in. If you'll notice in your agenda packet, there's a breakdown in a memo. And what we're asking for tonight is just some clarity. We have some conflicting language within our existing personnel policy. We're to allow anyone, any employee who gains more than 240 hours in basically a fiscal year gets carried over to the end of that fiscal year. The reason that was done was the software at the time only allowed us to do a manual correction at the end of the year. The new software that we've purchased now allows us to do that by the employee's anniversary date. So, that way, at no time, an employee would be carrying more than the allotted 240 hours. So, we're just asking, I know John and I have talked about this in prior months before, what would be the best way to tackle it. It does appear that our system will allow it to be on the employee's anniversary date. So, we're asking for amendment to make it from going from an annual allotment to the allotment of the employee's anniversary, which we can now do.
The effective difference between the two?
Uh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
What is the real difference, being on the anniversary versus the fiscal year?
The only difference is, real quick example, let's say that you're an employee who your anniversary date was today. You are now in our current system, carrying the excess of 240 hours. If you're eligible, you're carrying that until the end of June. Where now, with the new system, it allows our accounts payable to go in and actually go ahead and transfer the 240 hours into your sick leave based on your anniversary date.
Just like advantaged employees that were hired earlier in the year.
Yes.
So, if you were hired in January, you had the potential to build up a whole lot more leave time than if you were hired late in the calendar.
And our current policy, it states you can't carry more than 240, so it's kind of, if we could just get it all on the same level.
What do you think, Karen?
I think that's a good thing.
What do you think, Travis?
I certainly think it's more fair to all employees. It puts everybody on an even playing field, so.
Any further discussion from the Board? Tonight I'll entertain a motion to adopt it as presented tonight. Okay, motion on a second. Okay, all in favor. Discussion on Town Council Meeting Dates to Discuss Uniform Guidance Policies. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. We discussed this briefly at our Board meeting last month in regards to it might be beneficial for all to sit down and discuss uniform guidance policies at a special call meeting. And wanted just to kind of get some dates and ideas from the Board. One date kind of floating around was maybe Monday, August the 20th. I've spoken with Mr. Cole Pepper, and I do know that he will not be back in town until around the 15th or 20th. So, just kind of wanted to open up some discussion from the Board, what dates would work for you this month.
Is everybody okay with Monday, August the 20th at 5:30? Or so, I'll for motion to have a special meeting?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I just, I mean, the one, and I do think I probably need to be with you for that meeting. I have, yeah, Monday, August 20th is a school board meeting day, so, I mean, it does work out in the sense that I'll be here, but that's a 6 o'clock meeting, so I wouldn't, you know, an evening meeting doesn't work for me that day.
What's number two? At the age of this, would it possibly be, could we possibly, would it be all right with the Council if we moved it up, say, to 5:00?
I don't know how long the time.
I think it's time.
You're not going to give him time?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a trip. I just, you know, that's, I hate to, I try to find times when I'm coming here anyway for some other business to split up the cost for everybody.
What's the second? Thanks. What day of the week's good if it's not Monday?
I can, you know, if you're looking at that week, I can make most any other day work.
Would Tuesday, the 21st work?
Yeah.
Would 5:30 work for everyone as well?
Yeah, too. 5:30, okay. Tuesday, August the 21st. Okay, I'll need a motion to adopt that date for a special call meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor. Okay, moving on. Okay, the next item is something that I asked to bring to the attention of the Board tonight. We brought it to the attention once before, and we discussed it, and that is the parking. And this goes along somewhat with the parking plan that the town is considering with your parallel and your diagonal parking. And did you want to speak to what we, where that is on the schedule right now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. After speaking, you know, we've been trying to do the best we can internally. We were trying to look at last week with weather, but hopefully, we might look at trying to do something one day this week, weather permitting. We'll do that in-house.
And if we do, it'll be probably early in the morning or on the weekend.
Yes, sir. That would be correct, yes, sir.
Well, what the situation is, is we have a parking lot out here that basically is the prime parking in the town. And a lot of the parking is being taken up with county employees on a regular basis about all day. I think I just quit, Mr. Sessor. It won't change. There we go. So, as you can see, we have quite a bit of parking by county employees on a Monday through Friday basis. Okay. And these are some pictures. This has been going back to April. And then, there is parking available in municipal lots behind the old post office building. These folks that are parking in the Town Hall parking lot are mostly working in the old post office building. So, this is at different times of day that I've gone down, and there is parking available in municipal lots. And then, the county built a ramp, presumably for employees, county employees, to walk to their work in the old post office building. So, we do have a ramp, so the parking in the ramp is there. There is also a county parking lot in front of the Sheriff's Office Building, and it's available most of the time. Now, we, y'all authorized the town to put up visit to parking signs, but we did not put visitor parking only. But what we did do, we put out signs welcoming visitors. We've had the restaurant owners and the merchants association, the downtown Main Street merchants have requested that this lot be made available for visitors. have requested that this lot be made available for visitors, which it is, but we are beginning to get so much traffic now, we need the whole lot. So this is what we have done, and I have been noticing license plates from out of state pretty regularly. So that's what we have right now, and here's what's happened. The chairman and I have been in talks about doing this, and there got some confusion somewhere. And so the chairman's latest back to me was that, and I will just tell you what he gave me in his email.
You mean, you mean the county chairman?
Yeah, the county commission chairman. Okay. That don't wait for a formal decision to notify the employees about parking in the town's municipal parking lot until a decision to be made by the town council at the August meeting. Apparently, there was some confusion about the whole thing, and so nothing got done. And so, he said, "We are ready to respond following the board's action on the matter." Now, there was an earlier agreement made between the managers for three parking spaces at the far north end of the parking lot, on an as-needed basis if somebody needed to park there. So that's where it is, so what I'm asking tonight is for authorization, if you approve it, to present a letter to the county, and basically what it would say would be pursuant to an earlier agreement between the town and county manager, the town council voted Monday, August the 6th to Hesta County to have its employees who are currently parking in the town hall parking lot to park in the municipal lots at the rear of the old post office building, our own county-owned parking in the vicinity of the old post office. That would be emergency services and sheriff's office, their buildings. This is, the agreement was that the town would leave three parking spaces at the far north end of the lot available to county employees on an as-needed basis. The town council has designated this parking lot for people on town business and visitors. This is part of the overall parking plans the town has drawn up to alleviate some of the current parking problems. Thank you so much for your cooperation and understanding. I'd like to hear if there's any discussion from the board on sending this letter so that we can get this issue worked out. There being none?
No, this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The wording implies that three spaces would still be available, or those two...
Yeah, I think that that would be, since that was originally, that was originally agreed.
Originally agreed.
By whom? Well, actually, it was by the two managers.
Probably five years ago.
The pictures that you showed, I'm assuming that you want us to, I'm assuming that they are county employee cars?
Yeah, it's private cars.
Where are the shoppers' cars?
Where are they?
That's my question, where are they?
They're coming into the parking lot.
They're not, none of the shoppers' cars appear in these pictures.
No, because there weren't any places for shopping when I made those...
The other side was not clearly wide open?
Yeah, it was, Joe, it was open.
Is there a parking problem?
Yes. Because part of it, as you come up the street, the first thing you see are cars that are parked where I showed them in the photographs, and it looks like the whole lot is full, and people going by. That's why we put the sign out there in the street.
Part of this problem is, we're, it looks like you're suggesting that we give a franchise to the county.
No.
Well...
Did you go and talk to the manager about this?
My point is...
No, I'm asking, did you talk to the manager about it?
Oh, yes, I have.
Okay.
Did you?
That's what, no, that's what, that is where the water got flooded. I did not know that anybody was talking to the manager, neither did our manager.
This is a board decision, Bob.
I know it is, and that's why I'm bringing it to the board.
I don't see that there is a parking problem. If we limit, if we want to put patron-only shopping parking, then let's do it on some of the preferred spaces, coming up maybe the first 10 on a trial basis, but we can't say that the county gets the rest of them, because it could be somebody from, anybody else, we can't single them out, same as we don't single out the people who we know use most of the parking, on their two bigger parking lots in the, you know, on Palmer Street. If the board was inclined to do so and wanted to on a trial basis, I've got no problem. At one time, I suggested that from the tree north, that's about, I don't know how many spots that is, that's the least preferred ones. We make that available. Don't say, we don't just say the county can park there because they could, or could presumably anybody else who works in town or whatever, and let's dedicate with some signage or whatever, eight or 10 spots, and let's see how that, see how that goes.
Are you going to put the signs out for county employees?
Not for county employees, we can't, can we distinguish county employees from Drake employees, from people from the Outlaw 76, from the Root and Bell? Can we distinguish among the different people who need parking in town?
I don't think it's a distinction. What I think it is, is a courtesy to our merchants and our visitors which are coming to town. That's what I think it is. Within people that are on town business, we also sponsor a number of events here that requires a parking. We've got two events coming up that's going to require, from what I understand, 25 to 30 parking spaces. And I just don't understand when there is parking available, why the parking lot that was built to recently for visitors to the Scottish Tartan Museum and town business would be taken up by all day by employees who, that is parking available for them in municipal lots, if not the prime parking that we have for the county employees.
I don't agree that that is primer parking than a parking lot on Palmer Street. It obviously is not, because it is not typically used by people shopping in Franklin, period. It's just not historically a prime spot, maybe it's the location where it's coming, but if we want to put a number of signs out there, the closest ones, and then just kind of monitor it, then I don't see a problem if the board wanted to do that. But to draw a line saying that a certain group especially can't park there, that's a, I'm not willing to go that far.
We're not saying that can't, we're asking them not to. There's a difference. To voluntarily help the town out, help with our visitors who are coming in here to help us increase our sales tax revenues, which helps the county, it helps the town, it helps our merchants, and this, if there was no other parking available, I would, I would agree with you, but you go on Backstreet, and there's plenty of parking available, and it's no further away than where this parking lot is.
Well, I agree with you, with Joe, that, I think that's better parking for most shoppers than this, because you don't have to walk up the hill. I mean, that's where I always go, even though I'm a great walker, but I usually go right there, just because it's closer. And so I don't know why they don't, I mean, it's closer for them too, so maybe they're trying to be courteous in parking down here.
You say coming up the hill, what do you mean?
I mean, walking up this hill from the parking lot up to this...
Same amount of walking uphill coming from the municipal lot on Palmer. And then a lot, and then when you come, when you come to town for the first time, you don't see the parking lots. This is the first parking area you...
But that's the one that attracts all the cars.
Yeah, because, you know, why? They're employees of a couple of our businesses. They're not the shoppers.
Well, I think they are, but...
Well, I, I looked at it every day, and today, there was, there was a car from California, Alabama, Kentucky. We are beginning to get a lot of people coming into town, and we need to be as friendly to these people as we possibly can, and that's the feeling of our merchants, that's the feeling of our restaurant owners, they actually were the ones that approached the town first.
Well, I think having a visitor parking sign is a friendly thing, and is a good thing, but I, you know, I feel uncomfortable about telling them not to...
Let me ask you this. Doesn't the county have private parking for some of its employees with an arm on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have private parking for our employees too.
They don't have an arm on it, though.
No, the arm is just for the judge and clerk.
And the people that work in the annex?
No. The arm just goes in right there to the back of the side of the porch.
No, I'm not talking about that one. I'm talking about behind the annex.
Oh, you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, the mahogany robe parking lot.
Yeah, you're right.
And then they have also, they also have closed off some parking, and you've got quite a bit of their parking for law enforcement vehicles only. I just, I just see this as a courtesy to the people that come to Franklin, and we're trying our best to be a friendly town, and by golly, we're doing a good job of it, too. This place was packed Saturday, with everybody under the sun. Yes, Ms. Mayor?
This is kind of getting a little off of that, but when we, when I was looking, but I wanted to bring it up for discussion, and so it's kind of, it's a parking, but not really this. When we got this packet that had the banners, when I agree about being friendly to tourists, I think when you get beyond here, that you've got the sign that says visitor parking. We're not, people don't know when they get beyond that where you can park. I would like, at some point, if we could do, when I saw the banner in there that said the parking, I would like for us, as we go on through town, if we could get up there, maybe with the new bulb outs that we're going to have, and maybe even at the red light, to where there's something that points you to Backstreet to where you are at a parking lot. Because if you get past this parking lot, you don't know where to go. And that's not really talking, I'm not trying to get into this parking lot, I'm just trying to get that we need to do something to direct them, because I, you know, you've got a business down there. If people were trying to find you, they don't, I mean, it'd be nice, I know you've got the little P there now, but I really think it would be good to have something to direct you back there to where you could see you had parking. And like I say, that was a bit off the subject, but when I saw that banner for the parking, I thought it really looked nice, and it caught your attention more.
If you do get to Backstreet, there are signs about parking.
I know, but it's that little, but it's...
I know, it says little round...
Yeah, but you don't know to get back there, is what I'm saying. We're laid out in an odd...
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to say, whenever you go to a town, you expect to have to look for parking. I've never been to, I mean, it's been years since I've been to any town that I didn't have to drive around blocks looking for a parking place. Waynesville, Silva, Asheville, I mean, anywhere I go, I don't think people, I think people take that in their stride, and they probably drive around the block and don't think anything of it.
Don't think it's that great of a deterrent? You said you don't think it's that great of a deterrent?
Personally, no, I mean...
When I go to Asheville, I usually wind up paying to park somewhere.
Well, see how lucky you are.
And we're offering, we're offering prime free parking just steps away from our merchants that depend on visitors for the most part, particularly during summer. Hmm? Yes, sir?
Sorry, my...
Ms. Mayor and Counsel, if that may, maybe just offer a suggestion and just throw it out there for you guys to think about. Would a solution, and maybe some thought, be, you know, the first, as you walk out the door here and you look at your first 10, 15 spots here, maybe designate that, let it be known that that is for visitor parking only. And then the remainder of the spots with the original agreement that myself and the county manager made probably four or five years ago, is free to open, whether it's county employees, whether it's free to, merchants on Main, just kind of let it know the other half is free, but the town would prefer at least the first 10 or 15 to be for visitor parking only.
I hate to disagree with you, but I think it's going to confuse the issue. I think they ought to be open to visitors, period, in town business, and then accommodate county employees that may have a special problem, or they may be having a big regional meeting of emergency medical. Bring it on, come on down here, park in our parking lot, it will be available. But if they have that kind of meeting and have the parking lot taken up with the employees already...
True.
Well, what if your letter said, your chairman, would you ask the employees that they would park in the back part of the parking lot, and we'll try to keep the front part open to visitors?
That's what the letter said.
Didn't sound like that to me.
It didn't?
No, it sounded a little bit more draconian.
Well, draconian, yeah. All right, let me read this, and this is the draft, it's not, it's written by, pursuant to an earlier agreement.
Leave that pursuant.
All right. What do you want to suggest? You're the word, Smith.
I would just say, since we are experiencing a large influx of visitors to town, we would like to accommodate them with parking, and if you would, you know, we're asking your cooperation, if your employees would please use the back half of the parking lot, of the town parking lot, and leave the front half open for visitors. Let's do it on that...
If we're going to do that, I think we just ought to scrap the whole thing, Bob.
We'll see if they'll do it. Okay, scrap the whole thing.
In that, I guess, I wonder, you mind just continuing the discussion with the county? Because, I mean, I assume you have some discussion with them in some way.
Whatever the will of the board is, I'll be glad to carry that.
I don't know that we even need a letter for this, sounds like they're not a thing this summer to talk to Derek about, and I think a lot of the county's going to be happy to work with us if they're not.
The discussions have been ongoing, and everybody was, seemed to be okay with this, including Chairman Tate, as long as we just gave him something formalizing the decision, not, not an agreement, but just the decision, we're asking the county employees to please basically not take up the parking lot, at least. Sometimes we had as many as 15 cars in there.
I think that almost all parties need a little, a little clarity. I really think the tree is the dividing line, it's there, it's non-obtrusive, it doesn't take having to put up signs, just let them know that from the tree north, we, we're turning a blind eye, go ahead and grab your space, we want to leave it to the south, and let's see. Let's see during the seasons, take a look. If it turns out those are full, we hope they are, of shoppers, then we may have to dig five or six more out, and we can do that in a minute.
What if we ask the county employees to voluntarily abide by?
Well, given the fact that I doubt we'll be having tow trucks out there, it would probably pretty much be a voluntary thing.
I think they would cooperate. I know all, I mean, I think most of them would cooperate, I just think it's just a matter of saying, look, would you, could you, and help us out, because...
But they're going to want to know what we mean about how many spaces they can feel comfortable with, that's what they're going to want to know. There's going to have to be something there that everybody knows that is the line, and that the tree fits to me.
Just a minute ago, that was sort of described as draconian.
That was just the manager.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with what you said, absolutely. The points were, I don't know if we need a motion for that, I don't know if that seems like a kind of a majority vote, but if you want to... It depends on what you're looking to do. If you're going to direct the manager to do something instead of, you know, the mayor sending the letter, then I think you better clarify what exactly she's going to...
Let me ask you this, would you be any objection to the mayor, and the chairman, and the two managers getting together and talking about it?
I think that's a great idea, which will be fine.
All right. Exactly the consensus, the board, if it is, we'll leave it at that.
I'm not sure where that puts us. Well, I mean, are we saying now that our manager, the mayor's going to go and speak for us, the board, and cut them down to three spaces or something? I'm not, no, I'm not saying that.
We're not saying that either. We said let us go and work it out and see what we can come up with.
What is so, what needs, is our parking lot, what needs to be worked out? They're going to take whatever it is that we give them, because they know we have the right for them not to park there. Why don't we open up those 10 spaces or so between the tree and the south, the best ones, let's take a look at it, let's see if that's going to be enough to take care of those who want to come and shop in town. If it's not enough, we'll open up some more. Why do we have to take it any further than that?
Out of a courtesy to our visitors and our merchants.
If there's more than 10 at a time...
There are town taxes.
If there's more than 10 at a time, we can open it back up, Bob.
Are you going to come down to open it up, or are we going to have a town employee doing parking lot patrol? I don't know. What do you want to do?
I want the manager to direct, not to talk to the county, because we know that principally it's the county's occupation of those spots, but that we also know they have no more right than any others who are similarly associated, and that let the world know in whatever fashion is as least obtrusive but gets the word across, that from the tree coming south, leave those spots open, because we want shoppers to have the first choice. After that, we're not going to object with them parking. That's, that's what I think we need to direct our manager to do.
You put that in the poll?
I'll make that, I'll make a motion to that effect.
If that's the case, I'll say that.
All in favor? Okay, I'll tell the merchants what this board felt about allowing them to have fine parking. Yeah, that's what you just done.
I don't think there's any reason-
Oh, yes you have.
We may have-
Oh, yes you have.
There's no reason for you to go have to tell them.
Ms. Thomas, did you go directly to the county manager and talk to him about this?
I talked to him and I talked to him about a lot of stuff.
No, no. Did you, did you-
Not anything in particular.
But you took it upon yourself to go to somebody when you weren't asked to.
Did you have authority to talk, to send a letter to Mr. Tate? We, this is a board decision, not a mayor decision, Mr. Scott, this is a mayor's decision. You've put yourself, I mean, this is a board decision, not a mayor.
I disagree with you.
That's exactly right.
No, I disagree with both of you. Both of you have close ties to the county, I know.
Why, why can we not get along with the county? There's no, it's just-
We are trying our best.
No, we're not. Because you're trying, you had no reason to take it to say, we want this done, any more than we could say you wanted something done. It's our decision, we voted, and that should be the end of it without you having to say, I'll go tell the merchants.
Okay, well, let me just tell you this. I have an email from the chairman of the county commissioners that this got muddied because someone from the council went to the county manager. I knew nothing about it, he knew nothing about it, and that's when the water got muddied. I have the email about it. No, you did, Joe.
I mean, I, oh, I talked to that, muddy the water, we're holding the water then.
Because it threw all the agreements out of kilt.
The agreement was a prior agreement between the county managers, I mean, the managers-
Any of you been, it was working. Okay, let's move on. I'll let the merchants know how the board felt about that. Okay, the next item, Ms. Mashburn, is yours.
Uh, you have before you a senior celebration paper that was, uh, I was approached by a Macon County resident that's on this southwestern commission area agency on aging, and the seven westernmost counties are having, are trying to have a senior celebration at western. And they were asking that each county be able to come up with a thousand dollars in order to have that. Uh, the, I've been told that the county will put in $500 and they had asked if the town would be willing to put in $500 for that celebration.
The county said if we would put in 500, they'd put up 500.
No, the county did not say.
I'm just asking you, Ms. Mashburn.
No, I was told the county would put in $500 by the lady that approached me, and she asked if the town would put in $500. So I have that before you, I really don't know anything, uh, other than this that was sent to me when that came up.
Mayor manager, do you have any funds we could draw it from?
Yes, Fr-.
Before we take a vote on it, we have to see if the money's there.
Yes, Fr. Mayor and Council, we do, um, we probably have in our line item around $500 we could donate within the governing board's budget that we could, we could make an amendment and fix that.
Okay.
If it's the desire of the board.
You wanna put it in a motion?
Yes, I, go ahead.
It says here that donations must be secured by August 1st to be printed on the-
It actually, I'm sorry, I did not say that they have to know by tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, uh, that came in an email to me, I apologize, I did not say that.
Would we, would we be, would Macon County and Franklin be a gold sponsor if, if we both gave $500 or would we be-
I'm sure we would probably, uh, probably, if they got all their money, they'd probably let us leave whatever on it, I would think, because apparently this has been something they've had in the past at Cherokee, and the elderly really enjoyed it, but they, uh, apparently that's still not ongoing with the tribe, it's, and they're trying to revive it, was my understanding. So I would make a motion that the, uh, town sponsor the $500 for this senior celebration.
Good second.
My second.
In your discussion, all in favor? Got your $500. Okay, Mr. Ledford, sir, welcome. Think you wanted to talk about a street closing, perhaps?
I do. Uh, tonight I'm coming in here representing all the frequencies. We are now going to be located at one, Carolina Mountain Drive, and I want to start by thanking everybody that's helped us so far. Summer, thank you very much, Justin, Chief Adams, Chief Danny, everybody's been very helpful, uh, Justin Setzer. If I've seen anybody that doesn't want thanked, please tell me afterwards and I'll take it back. Uh, we are toward the base and, and at our location, and I'm glad you guys are talking about parking today because that's what I want to talk to you about. Uh, we would like to close, I don't have the formal address in front of me, but we'd like to close portions of Carolina Mountain Drive from somewhere near the apartments to just in front of, just at the corner of South Patton and Carolina Mountain Drive. We'd like to close one lane of the traffic, one, one lane to use for parking, and one lane we would like to turn into one-way traffic to still allow traffic just to move through that area. Uh, we would use a lane similar to a theme park, the Disney World or Hollywood, where you see that they park the car right next to each other in a tight fashion and pedestrians could walk in front of the cars to the venue. The section up on South Patton, we've already talked to Mike and Mike Boyd over there at Wyatt Insurance, and they've extended their lot, the grass lot and the parking at their location to us to be used for events, uh, that section of the road there. And the section we want to close on Carolina Mountain Drive would not stop any traffic to any other businesses in that location. Uh, Drake has several other entrances that will make it accessible for him, and Frogtown Market would still be accessible via the one-way traffic on Carolina Mountain Drive or coming in down Frogtown Hill and coming around. Uh, we don't need to close the street down all day, that we can work on with certain times. That section there of South Patton is perfect for our van load-in, uh, we would like to use some of that for spectator, um, and the van parking, that grassy lot right there, Wyatt has allowed us to use for van parking and traffic, et cetera. Those are the two sections. We're looking at portions of Saturday, Saturday, September 1st through Monday, Labor Day, Monday the 3rd. If the town would be able to assist us in that, we'd appreciate it.
The affected owners of properties, whoever they may be, will they, do you know if they had any notice that you were gonna come to this meeting and request that the street be closed? You didn't independently go-
I haven't entirely gone by-
Didn't expect you would have, but it, that's troublesome to me that we're, that they, we haven't heard from them and they didn't get a chance to look at the agenda to see it might be on the agenda and give them enough notice that they wanted to come and be the counterpoint, so to speak.
Sure, county said that.
When it was, uh, one lane closed and one lane open, would you be needing somebody there to direct traffic, tell people when to go and when to stop?
Yes, we would, we'd like to have that on either-
Somebody from police, provided by the town, or?
Somebody from the town or employees, depending on when we block that down, we would probably use that for taking also. So if the town wanted just to hire and enlist employees to put that location, we would provide you, it would be a, a ticket point for us, so that'd be a good place to put one.
Um, and just, uh, I talked to Summer a little this afternoon, and I wonder if Summer would care to talk a little about any concerns that, you know, we've had come in or any alternates to his current plan that you think might be more beneficial.
I think for Mayor and Council, one of the things that I talked to Councilmember Kimsey about, the, one of the considerations to be is maybe for the Frogtown Market, uh, business as well. I don't know how that would impede their traffic flow, that was just kind of one thing I was wondering about, because if you do close, the police department were to close all of Patton right here, you're gonna basically deny access to that business. So one thing to consider if this is the will of the board and you wanted to do that is not to close Patton, but maybe do a barricade at the very end of that stop sign before you take a left on the Carolina Mountain. That's just one thing I would note the board to be a little cautious on, is walking off Patton because you've got that business right there.
And you talked to that business owner at all?
Yeah.
I know what you did last time.
Right. Uh, so I think Donnie's closed on Sundays, I know he's closed on Sundays, and I think he's closed on Mondays, too, but we didn't want to actually close down all of South Patton, just that upper area where the grassy lot is located, down to where actually Donnie's, the upper parking starts for the Bishop Center.
Okay.
So really, we, that corner there where Donnie's located, uh, we, we wanted to only close the street to where Bishop's Cabinet Center starts, so that parking lot is still open to him, and we would close it there at the corner, right at the corner, so people could still even access his parking lot from Patton around that way.
And I know you also mentioned, uh, Ms. Mashburn, that maybe just run it to apartments, so it won't be, it won't be on the apartment.
Yes, other recommendation, if it's what the council wanted to do, is just be cautious as well about the apartments, I think you and I spoke about that in the past, is maybe you let your barricades in right there where your apartments and the laundry mat begins because you do have homes that would need to access Carolina Mountain.
I've just, I, I see a program, a plan that is just developing, uh, I've seen a request to get police officers, we can't use regular, we have to have police officers to be directing traffic, which would be at the town's expense. I see a meeting without any of the other people giving notice, the ones who may want to be here to object, I'm just very uncomfortable. I'm not even sure what the event's gonna be.
I can, I can vouch for it, I've been involved with who's events now, similar to in structure, I mean, you can correct me if I'm incorrect here, um, but he's had two outdoor, multiple day events, uh, the last one was just a few weekends ago, and he's, music at work, and so he had vendors, blast blowers and vendor makers and musicians, um, and for the most part, it seemed to be ran by my, you know, this is my personal assessment, very professional, it seemed like everything was safe, and I'd say that closing the street, he's gonna continue to have these events, is probably not a bad idea, because you do have people who were entering his event from Main Street, from Back Street, from down at Frog Town, from across to Drake Center, anywhere he's got parking agreed with. See, a lot of people walking through the roads, it's probably not a horrible idea to consider the safety of all those pedestrians who are going up, and he, he did have a fairly decent turnout in the hundreds, just in my experience there, so it'd be even, so. I just think, I think we might be a little, even we might regret not looking at the safety aspect of the request.
Is there a way that you could grant now and in the meantime, I could get with the local, the local business owners and see if there's anybody and then I-
Let me even say this, this is a weird situation, but we do have a meeting in two or three weeks.
Well, mm-hmm.
So can we take this and for consumption and bring, and somehow add that to the event at that meeting?
I have a question, too.
Yes, ma'am.
My concern is where it says that allows sale and consumption of beer and wine at above said closed street.
And I have that same question.
We've already discussed that on some previous stuff before.
And so, and I'm not sure, does that mean we want to sell it in the streets or adjacent or?
I don't, we don't want to sell alcohol on the streets, I wasn't sure if the town had come up with their special event alcohol permit yet. What we wanted to be able to do was allow the spectators that were using that portion of South Patton Avenue to watch the show, to be able to purchase alcohol onsite and get carried up there and consume it on that portion of the street that was closed.
No, are you, so the, the town has not changed its ordinance that, that deals with, and I, I don't know whether it's, you know, I certainly don't think it would be done by then, you know, it, it has continued to ban possession of out beer and wine, uh, on the streets and sidewalks, so, you know, you can sell on private property through there if you're, if you get a special event permit and-
And he, and he does-
Having is way more about, if you've done that, that's great.
And Chalk is taking his steps up into his, and he's, he's got a very-
But I don't think they'd be able to authorize you to, to have anybody else taking it out in the streets and it'd still be a violation of the ordinance.
It was my understanding that the board had been presented with, and I get to come up to the session, so just kind of, kind of push that forward, we can-
Talked about it, it's not moved forward yet, so.
And also, if the party understand that, and this is gonna be something that's gonna be reoccurring, if, if it doesn't happen in its entirety this time, I understand, but I would like to give some direction on how in the future, if I need to make some sort of public notice, or when that needs to be done, how do I do that? Do I need to go, I've tried to close the streets down to where the least amount of businesses or people are really affected, it doesn't thoroughly close off any built business, any business or residents or anything in that throughout the entire area, there's still access of at least one direction, on every direction as possible. Uh, we've been sent on the porch, you know, ten, twenty cars that you drive on that by, driving on the road from last week, so the section that I want to close down, I'm not making another rub. And half of them are driving by just to locate the venue.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if you're, if the council desires, you could hold this over and have discussion, add it to your call meeting.
First.
First. What's the pleasure of the board to-
My question, if we did that, is there, well, I guess, I'll look at it that way this way, is there anything we wanted to direct Mr. Ledford to do, or information we want him to bring us back at that meeting, if we put him on that?
This board member would like to be able to know if they're suggesting how much police presence that they would want us to contribute, which means pay for. And closing from sometime on Saturday to sometime on Monday, to me, is not enough. I mean, I'd want a plan, and I'd want it to have been run by our chief, who, who can present to us that it is doable, and then maybe have some idea if it's gonna have a cost involved that we might need to get some help with, but, and then also notice to all of the ones, to the business owners and landowners there who, who would be affected, I certainly would feel more comfortable feeling like I have to make an informed decision.
I have let the schedule open somewhat like that so that I could cooperate with the chief of police, I understand that was one of the concerns last time, uh, and whatever we can do to work with him to make it flow and seem like it's, it'll work, we were definitely happy to do that, it's been very easy to work with so far. Uh, as far as the police presence, as much as the town would be willing to give us, that'd be great, but we're fully prepared to help pay for that expense, we're not really at this point asking the town to give us that.
So I guess if it's the will of the board, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to move this agenda item to the August 1st meeting, um, and give Chalk and Mr. Ledford some time to bring us some more concrete.
I'll say it in a minute.
Close your-
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, Mr. Phil, love.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck, sir. Okay. The next item is a update on Ray's Chapel. Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, as the council will recall, we have, uh, you have been considering Mr. Prey's idea, and I think it's a, a good one, a noble one to, to look at, uh, whether we can facilitate the long-term preservation of the Ray's Chapel property. Um, I thought her presentation on that gave a lot of really good background on, on why that's an important piece of property. Um, and having reached out to Ms. Gibson and her, uh, son, who's an attorney, uh, and is sort of, I think, trying to help her, guide her through this, one thing that I didn't anticipate, I don't know that any of us did in our discussion, was that they would be adamant, I mean, what I had in mind was the town facilitating ownership of that to go on to historical society or, you know, somebody who's, who wants to have a long-term ownership and, and maintenance of the property. I, I don't think they're willing to transfer the property under that, with that sort of a possibility. Uh, it was made very clear to me that they would insist that the town own it and, and they, I mean, I, I think it's a good mark of their trust in, in the town, that they, they, you know, would trust the town and not really anybody else to have the long-term care and maintenance of that property. But obviously, that's not free and not something that we really had talked about, so I didn't want to move ahead anymore, um, you know, certainly not have a deed come into the town that made it sound as though you were gonna be obligated to have the perpetual maintenance of the place without having brought it back to you for some discussion first. So, um, I, I don't know what the, I don't know how extensive the cost would be, I don't know that it's really something we've, we've looked at, but they're there. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions about that, I just think it's appropriate for your discussion about whether that's something the, the town wants to be involved in long-term indefinitely.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Prey, would you like to speak to it?
Um, well, I guess, my thinking is we could handle it sort of as we do the J.C. Park, the Memorial Park, just be a piece of, probably the, uh, park, a building that we could, that people use as, uh- It'd just be a piece of, probably a park, a building that we could, that people use as we do the Memorial Park for community events. And when we started this project a long time ago, I started it and then I got sick and I had to back off. But tremendous, we had tremendous community support. I'm still having people coming up to me and wanting to know where it stands because they want to help. So I think it's something that we could engage the community in and get a lot of donations and volunteer help to restore it and then manage it, kind of, you know, let people, like they do the Memorial Park. It shouldn't be that much extra for it because you have procedures set up for that. But I think it may be long.
And we don't have to assume that that's their drop-dead position either. If the town was interested, it could be, it'd be middle ground, somewhere in between about perpetuity.
A trustee or something.
Yeah, there's different ways to...
I understand what, I think they're thinking because a lot of nonprofits, you know, they, they may come and go and the town is forever. And if somebody else has it and then they just, you know, go out of business or lose interest, then it's just sitting there. And I've seen that happen to nonprofits, so I know it's a possibility. But I think, you know, we could pursue that, at least, you know, they're still interested and I hope we are. I know a lot of people in the community are, so I'd like to see us continue with this.
So we want at least some, that's where I'm looking for. Some ability to find alternate management arrangement of some kind if the town owns it. But maybe, you know, if it was, again, it was made pretty clear to me they wouldn't, the council would say, "Deed" that wouldn't restrict our further conveyance of it to anybody else. So, but it's, so what, Joe, what you're thinking about is like, any further conveyance would be with a restriction that it'd only be used for memorial purposes and?
That or a rider reverter if it ceases to be used.
If it wasn't, it comes back to the town.
I mean, there's just different, everybody, I mean, it would be beneficial to all to make that property productive.
It would certainly improve the neighborhood there. And there are good things happening on Green Street and I'm like, I think this would really pick it up. And it was, you know, part of my thinking of this.
I'll continue the discussion with them and try to have something by maybe your August 21st meeting, just as, by way of an update.
Do we need any further on that this panel?
I don't believe so.
Okay. The next is discussion on barking dog ordinance. Councilman here, hi, sir.
Mr. Mayor, when the town adopted or re-adopted its noise control ordinance, you, we had a few leftover areas that needed to be updated. You did not get to... Yeah, I don't know what happened because this is a prior version of this. I apologize. The thing that is in your agenda packet is not fully fleshed out. The point of it being, we have a leftover piece of ordinance in chapter 91 that's about animals generally and barking dogs in particular and lays out a method by which to enforce the restriction on the noise from them. Now that you have the noise ordinance again, I think the cleaner way to approach that is to just have all of that transferred over to the noise ordinance. And I apologize, I think if we can continue this one also to the August 21st meeting, I'll have the revised version of this for you. In the state it's in, I apologize, it's just not ready for action. I'll get it.
So we will discuss the barking dog as well. It's like we're going to have pretty much a full agenda.
We'll just do this all again.
Meeting, yeah, okay. The next item is, I need to call for a motion to go into a closed session based on the economic development incentive. And this is allowed in the open meetings law and in the general statute, 143-318. So I'll entertain a motion to go into a closed session. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we will go into a closed session. I don't know how to tell the media how long we might be. I don't, I don't expect any real action to come out of the meeting. It's basically a special incentive.
I'm going to tell you how it will be.